Good evening, everybody. It is Wednesday, December 20th, 2023. The time is 6:30 PM. I'd like to call this regular town board meeting on a rescheduled date to order by asking everybody to please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me just start by saying that I've reached out to our neighbors and our friends in the town of East Fishkill, and we wish our deepest, most sincere condolences to the friends and families that we know over there, to the supervisor and his staff, and to most of all the East Fishkill Police Department for the tragic loss that they suffered a couple of days ago. Our hearts are with them. We're here for them. I've reached out to Supervisor DeLisandro, and he gives his thanks for everything. So I'd like to just say that, and may the young man rest in peace. With that, public comments or questions on agenda items only. If you have a question on an agenda item only, please approach the podium. Seeing nobody approaching the podium at this time, I'm going to add something. I'm going to invite Ms. Grace Burns to the podium. She has a letter that she'd like to read. Just please state your name and make sure you speak right into the microphone, okay?
Good evening. My name is Grace Burns, and I live in Wingdale. Mr. Supervisor and the rest of the town board, thank you for allowing me to comment tonight. I just want to bring to your attention a concern of mine. I wrote a letter regarding the intersection of Old Route 22 and Cricket Hill Road, both of which are county roads. I sent it to the County Public Works Commissioner, the County Traffic Safety Committee, the County Executive, and the State Traffic Safety Commissioner following two accidents occurring at this intersection. These two accidents occurring this year directly involved and impacted my family and I. I just wanted to let the town board know that I had brought the frequency of accidents to the attention of the county so they can hopefully look into improving the intersection with signage, lights, or some other solution. I wanted to speak up as a concerned resident in order to help my community and prevent future accidents from occurring at this spot. Mr. Supervisor and the board, I am asking if there's any advice that you would give to me to help me further bring attention to this matter. I appreciate your time, and thank you.
You're very welcome. And first, let me just first say, I hope you're healing well in a speedy recovery, and I'm glad you're okay. Okay? And you take what you need to take before you come back. All right? All right. What we suggest is you've started the right path. You wrote a letter. You sent them to the proper people. And what I will say, and I will give you my word, is that I will make sure they have that copy of the letter. Is this the letter you sent that you sent me?
Yes. Yep.
I will bring that back to work with me Monday. I will make sure that my direct boss and the commissioner, Robert Balkin, has a copy of it, as well as the gentleman that leads our engineering department.
Okay.
Okay? The problem that it is, is it is an intersection. There is a stop sign. It's two intersecting county roads. Used to be a yield, which you made me remember yesterday because it's been a while. I forgot. But I will let it be known that there has been some accidents there. And you are right. There's been a few just in the last couple of months.
Yes.
Okay? But you have my word. I will make sure they have the letter.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And I will push for something to be looked into. That's as far as probably we'll be able to go.
Yes, I understand.
You know, and when they ask, I will tell them, you know, I am a, I know of the calls because I am a fireman.
Yes.
I may not respond, but I know about them. So I will help you in any way that I can. It is a county highway and a county engineering, you know, situation, issue. But I will make sure they have a copy of your letter, and I'll make sure that they read it.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Okay, you too.
Would it be out of line for us to, to pen a letter to county in regards to asking for a traffic study there, or?
Give our opinion, maybe?
Yeah.
Tom?
I see no reason why the town board, if, could write their own request for the county to look into that intersection, and Joe can maybe assist on that.
All right. We can discuss that.
Yeah, I think a traffic study would be good because it's kind of a quirky angle that if you're going one way or if you're going the other way, and that there can be confusion there.
Yeah.
So especially if somebody's traveling with a GPS or something, and it says, go left, go right, go left, go, what do I do? What do I do? And it's already too late for somebody coming the other way. So, yeah, I agree with that.
We'll look into that. We'll talk about that. You're welcome. Can I help, Sue?
No.
You're good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Reports of the Recreation Department, the Highway Superintendent. I'll start it off. Julie Muncy couldn't be here tonight, so she sent on her report, Dover Recreation would like to thank all the kids and adults who participated in our programs over the last year. We could not have done it without all of your, all of our volunteers and our employees who made our programs and events go so smoothly. A special thank you to my staff for all the hard work, dedication, and commitment to you that you show throughout the year. I appreciate everything you do. Thank you, Paula, Doty, Venna, Candy, Sean, and Paul. Thank you to the Highway Department, the constables, the town employees, and especially our town board for all the time that you have helped and supported the Recreation Department. Happy holidays, and I hope everyone has a great new year. Julie Muncy, Town of Dover Recreation. Thank you, Julie. If you're listening by any chance, probably not, but fine job done by all. Jason, Highway Superintendent Jason Sartori.
Jason Sartori, Town Highway. So far this month, we have been lucky because we haven't had any of that four-letter word that I don't like, snow. I'll say it out loud, which has given us a chance actually to continue cleaning out our ditches on various roads throughout the town of Dover. Another thing, we've just received reimbursement for our extreme weather recovery, pave over potholes, pave New York and CHIPS program, which was a total of $293, $293,714.72. So that's reimbursement for all the work that we did this year. Those are programs from the state of New York that helps towns out, so we get money back for that. I would like also, the other thing is a reminder to the residents about the law about parking your cars on town roads from October 15th to April 15th. Please keep them off, or you will most likely be ticketed. We're going to start enforcing that a little bit more because I know in the developments, a lot of people have been parking in the development where they shouldn't be parking in the roads, and it's caused a lot of issues. And it also when the snowplows come through. So hopefully, everybody, please stay off the roads, no parking. And I would like to thank my whole team for the hard work for the past two weekends where we've had a lot of rain, and we've got our roads back together pretty quick. And because we've been taking care of them, they haven't been destroyed too much, so we've been staying right on top of those. And every, and that's it. And I'd like to thank Terry for all the hard work that she does for me with the paperwork for the extreme weather recovery and all those CHIPS programs and FEMA that we've been working on. And I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. And as I stated today, thank you to all your guys.
Yep.
Job well done all year, especially with the-
In our new guy's act.
In our new guy's act. Hey, welcome. Can't say enough. Thank you to all of them. Reports to the supervisor and the town board members. Councilman Maluta.
On behalf of the American Legion, we had a few toy drives for Christmas, and they were very successful. The Legion is looking good. There's been some improvements there. And, you know, we're going to really, that's going to be on the map again in the town of Dover. Other than that, have a Merry Christmas, and that's what I got.
Thank you, Jan. Councilwoman Susan Jackson.
Nothing to worry from the library or the schools. Happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you. Deputy Supervisor for the last time.
My last meeting, huh? Well, yikes. Well, my last meeting in six years. Well, first things first, I just got to say thank you to a few people. First, my wife, Amanda, for kind of supporting me in all of this. She really didn't know what I was getting into or the type of time that this was going to take, and I'm, I just am grateful and I appreciate her letting me do what I do here. So that's been great. Also, also the, my, my, my family and kind of those, you know, support group that I, that I have amongst me, my mother for always making me look good here. So I, I appreciate that. My father and even Chelsea Eno for kind of running my life so I can, I can be here some nights as well. So that's, you know, that's, that's all part of it, too. So I've kind of grown up on the board here over the last six years, which is kind of, kind of interesting to reflect on. I've started a family. I've started a couple of businesses. And here, we're, we're moving on and up to the legislature. So I just want to touch on our board here. We have done some tremendous things together. And what a, a great experience this has been. A battle at times. We've, we've seen some fairly horrific things here, lived through that amongst the town, lived through a pandemic, and, and then, you know, was able to celebrate some, some big accomplishments, you know? We, building that park is, is something that will always be very close to my heart. So that, that was, that was a really great project that I'm, I'm so glad that I could be a part of. To our town board members, Kern and former that I worked with, Sue, Jan, Jay, and Rennie, and even Jane, I, I always will appreciate the time that we were able to spend together. And I, I learned so much from you all. It's, I, thank you. Thank you for that. And, and to Rich, my, my appointment as your deputy for the last six years, it, or four years, four years.
Four years, please.
Four years, yes. Four years. You know, it's, you know, in government, we, we agree and, and, and disagree and keep moving on. And, you know, whatever I've, whatever we've done here, I, I am so grateful that you and I were able to work closely together. I, I always felt that we were working as a team even when we had differences of opinion on, on matters. And at the end of the day, I feel like we always did the best job for the residents of our town. So with that, it, it's been great here. So, and lastly, also, Jason, I've never called you just to say hi. It was always because I wanted something. And it was time, or it was money, or it was material, or machines. And, well, thank you for picking up your phone. I guess that's, that's the big thing. And, and always being there, you know, when, when I was thinking, big picture. So it, I, thank you. It was a lot of fun working together down at the park and, and other projects. So the residents, I, I am forever grateful for your trust in me, in me here. I look forward to, to moving on to the legislature. And, yeah, we're, so we're going to move on. Tommy, you're a good man.
Nice.
You're a good man. I'm going to, I'm going to miss sitting in the, in the room there with, in the executive sessions with you. And you were always a voice of reason for us, even when it wasn't what we wanted to hear, but it's what we needed to hear. And I'm going to miss that. So, thank you.
You too. Good luck.
Yeah. All right. That's enough for me. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, you leave it on me. Now you got it on me. I don't have much of a report, but I do have a lot of thank yous for this year. Our board members, each and every one of them, for the long, we had a long, tough year, and we're still under a lot of pressure. But we still got things done, as Andrew did state. Our planning and our zoning board members, for as far as I'm concerned, the fine job that they do, the time, the effort, the dedication, I can't thank them enough. The secretary herself, Marilyn Van Millen, I thank you as well. Our Recreation Department, Julie and her crew, second to none in my eyes. Our Highway Department, Jason and his guys, I've said it three or four times today, second to none. We've got a small group, but we've got a group that can do it all. And I think it proves it with the storms that we've gone through since July, and again, just a few days ago. They got it done. They needed to get done. We had way more damage in July than a lot of other towns, and we were up and running in a week to 10 days. And they weren't after three weeks with a bigger crew. So, you know, I give the kudos to where it, where it's deserved. I give all the credit to where it's deserved. Staff in our Building Department, I thank you all. You work hard each and every day. You keep that department running. And most of all, our Clerk's Office. We have the best town clerk in Duchess County.
Amen.
And I will say that over and over again. Brad Kendall's scared to death of her. She's the only clerk that can beat him, he says. But with all due respect, she does a fine job, and her office does a fine job. And then, last but not least, the ladies in my office, they carry my weight, and that's a chore, no pun intended. But they do a lot. You know, we all work, but we all come here after work, and we get done what we need to get done. And everybody in this town hall building sets the pace, takes the road that it needs to take, and keeps it straight. And I thank each and every one of them throughout this town. It's been a rough year, and I'm glad we're getting through it. And January 1st is coming, and we'll start a new one. So with that, I want to thank, I want to end it with thanking Andrew. We've been together for six years now. He was deputy under my predecessor, and when I took over in 2020, I knew there was no doubt of who my deputy was going to be. I asked him, he accepted, and he's been there by my side for the last four years. As he stated, we started off in a rough time. 2020 was terrible. You know, we could only do what we could do, what they would allow us to do. And I am proud to say that we set this room up, and we never missed a meeting. We never missed a beat. We got accomplishments that we had set goals on, and we got it there. We got projects done. We didn't stop working throughout this town. We did what needed to be done. Highway kept working even though they had to go split shifts, but we got it all done. And we maintained what I like to say, the business. We kept the business going. Okay? So I thank him. I wish him the best of luck in his, in his next, next position as, as county legislature, in the county legislature. And I thank you for everything what we've been involved in. You are a friend of mine. You will always be a friend of mine. And we are not done. We have work to do. We met on some of it today, and we will keep that going. And I welcome Tom Holmes to take your seat January 1st. A man of this town, a friend of a lot of people in this town, and a man that is a team player and wants to do what all of us up here doing, doing right now. And that's the best possible job we can do for the town and the residents within it. All right? So I thank you, and I wish you best of luck, my friend.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
You got it. So with that, before I tear up, I want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, a very Happy New Year, and let 2024 be much better than 2023 for all of us. Okay? That's it. That's all I have. On to resolutions. Resolution authorizing and approve consent agenda items. Be it resolved that the town board of the town of Dover does hereby approve the following items for consideration and adoption of the 2020-2023 Town Board Regular Meeting Consent Agenda. You got them?
Yeah, pulling up here. It wasn't on the bottom. I got it.
Authorize the payment of abstract number 12 of 2023. Accept the minutes of the Town Board meeting of November 15th, 2023, and a special meeting, special Town Board meeting of December 6th, 2023. Approve the Town Clerk's report for November 2023. Approve Town Supervisor's monthly financial report for 2023, November of 2023, and authorize budget transfers, budget amendments, and payment of off abstract purchase orders as prepared and submitted by the town's bookkeeper. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Brought by House, seconded by Maluta. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So carried, one absent. Resolution authorizing the adoption of revised Local Law Number Two of 2023, amending Chapter 131 of the Town, Town Code of the Town of Dover entitled Taxation Establishing an Exemption for Low-Income Disabled Residents and Amending Income Eligibility for Senior Citizens Exemptions. Whereas the Town Board of the Town of Dover desires to amend Section 131 of the Town Code entitled Taxes to Increase the Income Eligibility for Senior Citizens to Quality for Tax Exemption, to Qualify for Tax Exemptions and to Establish an Exemption for Low-Income Disabled Residents. And whereas the Town Board of the Town of Dover authorized, I, Town Council, to prepare an amendment to Chapter 131, Article 11 of the Town Code entitled Senior Citizen Exemptions and Low-Income Disabled Exemptions, to initiate the process, environmental review of the proposed local law under SECR, and to set a public hearing date on the proposed local law for September 27th, 2023, at 6:30 PM or as soon thereafter as public comment could be heard. Whereas, notice of said public hearing was duly advertised in the Poughkeepsie Journal, the official newspaper of the Town of Dover, for the time period required. And whereas, on September 27th of 2023, a public hearing was held at 6:30 PM at the Dover Town Hall, and all parties in attendance were permitted an opportunity to speak on behalf of or in opposition to said proposed local law. And whereas pursuant to Part 617 of the Implementing Regulations pertaining to said Article 8 State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR, it has been determined by the Town Board that, that adoption of said proposed local law would not have the potential for a significant negative effect on the environmental, on the environment, and could be processed by other applicable governmental agencies without further regards to SECR. And whereas, on October 25th, 2023, Local Law Number Two of 2023 was adopted by the Town Board of the Town of Dover. And whereas, upon review, a few ministerial corrections and some typographical errors and minor changes to certain sections of the local law needed to be made, which is, does not alter the intent of the law nor change any of the income levels for eligibility. Now therefore, be it resolved that in accordance with the authority granted to pursuant to New York State Constitution, Article 1X Municipal Home Rule Law, Section 2 et sec, to Town Board of the Town of Dover, hereby adopts said revised local law Number Two of 2023, a copy of which is attached heretofore and made a part of this resolution. And be it further resolved that the Town Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to enter said revised local law Number Two of 2023 in the minutes of this, of this meeting and in the local law book of the Town of Dover, and to give due notice of the adoption of said revised local law Number Two of 2023 to the Secretary of State of New York. And the Town Clerk and Supervisor, if necessary, are hereby further authorized and directed to take all actions necessary to file revised local law Number Two of 2023 with the Secretary of State. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Maluta, seconded by Jackson. Any discussion?
Thank you, Tom, for your help.
So post, post-adoption by the Town Board, the Town Clerk had sent a copy to County Real Property, and we didn't get their comments back till after the adoption. And they picked up on a couple, I had, in one section of the local law, we had referenced 467, the real property law should have been 459C. And also, they, one of the requirements for disability are certain proof, and one is a U.S. Postal Service disability. Those were the two main changes. The income levels that the Town Board adopted and remain the same. So there was no need for a trigger, the, for a new public hearing or anything like that.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Any other discussion? Hearing no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried, one absent. Resolution authorizing the closure of the 2022 Duchess County Municipal Investment Grant, MiG Grant, Program Senior Recreation Center and Town Library Access Improvement Project. Whereas, the Town of Dover received a 2022 Duchess County Municipal Investment Grant, MiG Program Grant Award for $40,000 for a Senior Recreation Center and Town Library Access Improvement Project. And whereas, the project was bid, awarded, and constructed with oversight from the Town of Dover Building Department and Duchess County MiG Program. And whereas, final documentation was submitted and grant funding received from Duchess County to successfully complete the project. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Town of Dover Board hereby authorizes closing the 2022 Duchess County MiG Grant Project. I'll entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Brought by Maluta, seconded by Jackson. Any discussion?
Looks great.
Yeah, it looks good.
They look great.
Good job. Hearing no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So carried, one absent. Resolution accepting the Planning Board Member resignation. Be it resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Dover hereby accepts the resignation of Roy T. Holmes from the position of Town of Dover Planning Board Member effective December 31st, 2023. position of Town of Dover Planning Board Member effective December 31st, 2023. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Brought by Maluta, seconded by Jackson. Any discussion? Tom, thank you for your time on that board and everything that you've done for it and with it. Appreciate it. Look forward to having you on this board next month. Hearing no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So carried, one absent. Resolution authorizing the advertisement for the request for proposals, RFPs, for a municipal fiscal advisor for construction of a new Boyce Park Recreation Center project. Whereas, the Town of Dover Town Board has investigated the idea of constructing a new multipurpose recreational center at Boyce Park based on results of 2017 residents' community survey and as recommended in the Community Resources Section of the adopted 2022 Town of Dover Comprehensive Plan Update. And whereas, the Town of Dover received a 2023 Duchess County Community Development Block Grant of $150,000 toward construction of a new multipurpose recreation facility and has designated $150,000 of Federal American Rescue Plan Act COVID-19 Recovery Funds toward this project. Whereas, the town held an open house in June of 2023 to present ideas and seek residents' feedback and presented draft renderings for exterior design and interior layout to residents at the September 2023 Annual Town of Dover Community Day. And whereas, the anticipated cost of this project will require the guidance of a municipal fiscal advisor to assist with development and implementation of a financial plan and general obligation bond for residents, consideration by referendum vote on a date to be scheduled and announced in 2024. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Town of Dover Town Board hereby authorizes the advertisement of a request for proposals for the services of a municipal financial advisor and directs the Town Clerk to publish notice in the official newspaper of the Town of Dover and on the town's website. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Brought by House, seconded by Maluta. Discussion. Want to speak on this?
Yeah. Just to simplify this a little bit, when we say that we're going to RFP for a fiscal advisor, we're not spending any money currently. Or there's, there's, there's nothing that, there's nothing on the table that is, is really costing us taxpayers any, any funds right now. It just needs to, to make that clear. We have some grant funding and we have some matching funds through ARPA that we are looking to use towards a facility of some sort. That is still, you know, we're a work in progress. We're, you know, using the, the feedback that we received from our open house and, and trying to come up with a plan that not only would fit a, a budget that our, that, that us, the residents would think that is manageable, but also a, a facility that our, our town needs. We have, Boyce Park is, is in desperate need of a facility that not only can serve as a, a rec facility of sorts, but also to be used in the summertime in an effort to alleviate some of the, the hot, you know, the, the hotter days that we have and having those kids outside for that summer camp. It, that's, that can be brutal. And I'm not making it out to be a, a safety concern. I mean, obviously, we've, we've been, we've had it that way for decades probably at this point. But looking to the future and looking on at where that rec department and how we can better serve the residents with a facility of sorts and, you know, potentially have a, a multi-use there in an effort to potentially use it for summer camp or maybe basketball of, of some sort. It, it's needed. And we're just in that very beginning stage here of, of trying to come up with a, a plan that we can then present to the town with some, some real numbers. That's really what it's going to come down to. That's what it always comes down to. So that, we're, that's all we're doing here is we're just trying to get the right people in place so that when, when we do come to the residents with this kind of, not only idea at that point, but a plan, a, a, a real plan on how to do this. They can make the decision on, on whether they feel that they would like this in our town and whether they're willing to, to, to bear that additional cost. I mean, this is not, it's, it's going to affect all of us. Not in a, a, not in a massive way, but, you know, we're all going to have to, you know, put towards this. So that's what we're trying to accomplish with this. If that's, like, lay that out in the least
Well said.
Is understandable, right?
This is us listening to the people and taking what the residents have told us they wanted in surveys and in private discussions and on Dover days. This is us trying to put together what they would like to see. And the people of Dover will make the decision. That's what the public referendum is. It will be a vote. And you will tell us, yes, we want this or no. And we're, we will work hard. We will present. We will have presentations. We will have discussions. Everybody will know every detail that needs to be known. And that's where we're at. It's for you, the people. Okay? Thank you, Andrew. Anything else? Hearing no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried, one absent. Resolution authorizing submission of a community space public Wi-Fi grant application. Whereas, the Berkshire-Teconic Community Foundation has announced a community space public Wi-Fi grant opportunity for municipalities to install Wi-Fi capabilities that advance digitally quality, equity, especially for those who are low-income and otherwise digitally disenfranchised people. And whereas, according to the United States Census data, the Dover Plains Hamlet is a census-designated place that qualifies for consideration due to its poverty rate. And whereas, the town's J. H. Ketchum Memorial Park in Dover Plains does not currently have internet access and Wi-Fi installation in the community center building could provide service that will benefit residents who utilize the park's walking track, outdoor fitness equipment, its playground, its baseball field, and specifically those who live in the Dover Plains Hamlet who may not have internet access. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Town of Dover Town Board hereby authorizes the submission of a community space public Wi-Fi grant application to the Berkshire-Teconic Community Foundation for assistance with Wi-Fi installation at J. H. Ketchum Memorial Park. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Brought by House, seconded by Maluta. Discussion. This opportunity came forward. It was brought to us by our clerk and we felt absolutely, those people in Dover, there are, I shouldn't say those people, there, there are people that need this. And this is an opportunity to try to bring them this type of help or assistance or capability to now step up their game a little bit and be connected better to what they may need. All right? Any other discussion? Thank you, Katie. Hearing no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So carried, one absent. At this point in time of the agenda, are there any public comments? If you have any comments, any questions, please step to the podium, state your name, and go ahead and ask.
Just one other person that I, I need to recognize tonight, our, our outgoing and legislator, Alan Sermon. He served the residents of Dover for, for the last 14 years in our county legislature. That, he was always a strong voice for us. And I, I appreciate all of the, the conversations and, and, and guidance that, that he had given me over the years. A very, very intelligent man, to the point where I would almost have to ask him to dumb it down at, at times. But I, he has always represented Dover and I, well, and thank you very much for your service to us here, the residents. He served on several committees out at the county and, thank you.
You beat me to it, sir.
Oh.
I had, I had
Did you have it there?
Oh, I just, well, I didn't, I didn't see it.
I didn't see it.
But I will add to that if I may. I've been, I've worked with Alan and, and campaigned with Alan and ran for office with Alan since the first time, 2010. So Alan has been there. Alan thought about retiring and Alan stayed for us and with us. And you're right. Andrew was correct. He, when we needed something spoken about at the county on our behalf, he did. He did. And grants, he supported us. He let it be known that we needed it. And I've said it over and over again, our grant average is phenomenal. And he helped and he was a big part of that. So as supervisor, I'd like to thank Alan Sermon for all that he's done for this town. I reiterate everything that Andrew has said. I thank him. I appreciate him. And even though we never, didn't see him often, he was always answering the phone and answering the email, but when he needed to be here, he would be. And I'll stand by that. So thank you very much, Alan. Best of luck in your next, next endeavors. And thank you for the last 14 years. A question for the board. Do you have a problem with skipping the executive session at the end of this reg, at this meeting and going into an executive session after reorg?
I have no problem.
That way the
I'm good with that.
The people can
Yeah.
Can get out of here after the reorg.
Yep.
You good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. We're good. That's okay, right, Tom?
Absolutely.
Okay. We will have a meeting, a meeting immediately following this, just a five-minute break to switch over the computer and get things in place. You're all more than welcome to stay. It's our reorg meeting. It's where we make our appointments for liaisons, chair persons for our boards. You're all more than welcome to stay. But with that, at this time, for the last time, I am going to ask Deputy Supervisor Andrew House to please make the motion to adjourn your last regular Town Board meeting.
I'll second the motion.
No, you make the motion.
Oh, make a motion. All right. Well, I can do that too. So yeah, so I will make a motion to, to adjourn our meeting on December 20th, 2023 at 7:09.
And with much appreciation for everything you've done, I second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great night. Meeting's adjourned.
Merry Christmas.